Okay, I'm gonna call to order the Town of Gilbert Planning Commission Study Session. First item is Item 2, Oath of Office. So we have some people that need to do an oath of office now. Carl Bloom-- Carl's not here, so how are we gonna handle that with him? Will he just have to take an oath at another time?
Yeah.
Okay. David Blazer, William Fay, Tyler Jones, alternate Colby Ashton, alternate Anthony Bianchi, and myself. Are we all here except for Carl?
Yes.
Okay. And Nancy, how do you want to do this? You just want us to stay up here?
This is my first time reading an oath. The last time I took one was at my citizenship oath.
[laughing]
So, very excited.
Oh.
I don't know, how do we typically?
Everybody can stand. Everybody can.
Okay.
Everyone can stand.
And I'll do everybody at the same time, so just after I say aye, please state your name. Just state your name, and then I'll keep reading. So is everybody?
You don't have to go on the classroom.
Hi, Bridget. "I state your name, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona and the ordinances of the Town of Gilbert, Maricopa County, Arizona, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of a Town in Gilbert Planning Commission member in..."
They have to read that.
That's a lot.
Oh, they have to read all of that?
Too much to know.
You got a lot more than...
I didn't know they had to say the whole thing. They do? Okay.
I've...
Small chunks. Okay, hey, I'm...
Nancy, five words.
I'm a baby oath of... [laughing] Okay, okay, okay. So, we'll start over. So, let's do this again. "I state your name, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona..."
Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
"...and the ordinances of the Town of Gilbert, Maricopa County, Arizona, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of a Town of Gilbert Planning Commission member..."
Duty of a Town of Gilbert Planning Commission member.
"...in Gilbert, Arizona..."
In Gilbert, Arizona.
"...according to the best of my ability..."
According to the best of my ability.
"...so help me God, or so do I affirm."
Or I will affirm.
Thank you. And I apologize.
Thank you, Nancy. And we will need everybody who was just sworn in to sign their oath of office before you leave this evening.
Okay. So we do have some new people joining us on the commission. Why don't we just take a minute and just have them kind of introduce themselves real quickly, as this is the first we're meeting them. So, let's start. David Blazer?
Hi, I'm David Blazer. I've lived in Gilbert for about sixteen years now. I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission for a couple of years prior to it becoming, combining with the Design Review Board. And I'm just excited to be back, serving and contributing to the community.
Great, thank you. And I knew this would be a good filler, 'cause here comes the Vice Chair now. William Fay. Who's William Fay?
Yes. My name is Bill Fay. I've lived in Gilbert for about twenty-two years, and I've worked with local government for probably about the last twenty, of the last twenty-two years, and I work at the state at ADOT now. And I'm thrilled to be a member of the local community here.
All right, thank you. Tyler Jones?
Hi, I'm Tyler Jones, born and raised, and have been part of the Redevelopment Commission for a couple of years, and excited to be part of the Planning Commission.
All right, thank you. Colby Ashton. Which one of you down there is Colby?
I'm Colby Ashton. I have been a resident of Gilbert for almost twenty years, a native Arizonan. I work with spreadsheets all day, pretty exciting stuff, and I'm just happy to serve.
Thank you. Anthony Bianchi, did I say that correctly?
Yeah, Bianchi.
Bianchi?
So, yeah, Tony or Anthony Bianchi. I've been a Gilbert resident for twenty years now, and like Commissioner Blazer, I was on the Planning Commission some years back, so this is my second stint. But for gainful employment, I work for the Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport Authority as their planning manager, so excited to be back on. Thanks.
Great, thank you. And to all the new people, say, you know, welcome aboard, thank you for your service, and I can't wait to work with you these next few years, or next four years. Vice Chair Bloomfield just showed up. You missed the oath at office, so you're gonna have to do that separately, probably later, maybe at the end of this. Okay. All right. Moving along to Item 3, Elect Chair and Vice Chair. I'd like to make a recommendation that Vice Chair Bloomfield take the position of Chair. Is there any discussion on that, or would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we nominate Commissioner Bloomfield as the Chair.
Okay. And that's Commissioner Simon that made that. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Munt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. You're the new Chair, sir.
I would, I would also like to request that someone make a motion that Noah Munt, or excuse me, that Jan Simon be the Vice Chair.
I'd like the motion that we nominate, or have Commissioner Simon be the Vice Chair.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion?
I'll second that.
Second from Commissioner Munt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Well, we've got, we've got that part of it done.
All right. Do we need to switch around, or are we good for this session, and then...
Right now, and then you could switch before the regular meeting.
Okay. I guess Chairman Bloomfield, you wanna take the show?
Okay. I apologize for being late. On our next, our next item of business was appoint a zoning hearing officer. We have chosen to postpone that to the November 4th meeting, because we're awaiting some, some more discussion internally with staff on that one. So, that being said, we're gonna move on to Item Number 5, DR 20-107, McDonald's at Queen Creek as part of our study session.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is Sydney Bethel. I'm just about to share contact with you. And is everyone able to see my presentation on the screen?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, wonderful. The request before you tonight is DR 20-107, McDonald's, Queen Creek, and Key Biscayne. The subject site is approximately 1.25 acres and is located at the southwest corner of Queen Creek Road and Key Biscayne Drive. The applicant is proposing a new standalone 4,391 square foot McDonald's restaurant with a drive-through. Tonight, I'm just requesting input on the project, the first being general site design feedback, the second being general elevations feedback, and the third being approving the project administratively. So this project originally came in in first review, a little over 5,000 square feet, and then in the second review came in at under 5,000 square feet, which is our threshold for administrative approval if the project is a part of a master site plan. So we are requesting that the project be approved administratively with the caveat that all of the commission's comments and staff comments be addressed prior to it being approved. So as I previously stated, this is, this site is located within a master site plan that was approved in 2016. The subject site is Lot 6 within the master site plan, and you can see the acre, the acre of the development here is Spectrum Senior Living, which is a congregate care facility that completed construction in 2018. This here is just showing you how the site has started to develop since that care facility was completed. So we have a superstar car wash that is under construction currently, along with a vacant restaurant pad, which we're waiting for something to come in. To the south of that, we have a Backstar Coffee, and then also some retail and restaurant shops. And up here, I just placed in the site plan of the McDonald's to show you how everything would look cohesively. There was a gas station that was approved here in 2016, a hard corner, but it was never constructed, and the approval is now invalid. So moving on to the site plan, as I previously stated, the applicant's proposing a new standalone McDonald's restaurant, and it's located here on the western portion of the existing parcel. The remaining 0.97 acres will be developed at a later date. It is not included in this middle. The applicant has provided an exhibit of a possible future development scenario for the remaining portion to make sure that it's viable for development, and I will show you that in the next slide to see what that looks like. The drive-through for the proposed McDonald's is located on the eastern portion, and it has a dual lane drive-through that then goes into one single service lane. There are two points of access proposed for the site, the first being off of Queen Creek Road located here to the north, and the second being off of Key Biscayne Drive over here to the east. As you'll notice, there's some internal roadways that those filter onto before getting into the site. Those were constructed with the first element of the master site plan, the anchor, so those are existing and they'll be utilizing that. As you'll notice, there is also a drive that will pass through the future development site, so they will have a shared access there, and this will be constructed with the McDonald's, but will be utilized by the future development as And this is just that exhibit that references a future development scenario. They showed here another drive-through restaurant with a similar layout to the McDonald's, just to show us the feasibility of development, so we can get an idea of how this will develop. And then the landscape plan here, all of the landscaping along the right-of-way was installed with that first phase in the master site plan. The site will have a total of 25.5% of the net area landscaped, which exceeds the 15% required. What I wanted to point out was here below as well, on the southern portion, they are proposing some heritage live oak and then some shrubbery in order to create a vegetative screen, which provides some privacy to the residents to the south. This whole parcel is commercial, but since it is a residential use of that congregate care, we want to be sensitive to those existing The preliminary drainage plan here shows the onsite retention proposed in the form of underground and above-ground retention basins. The above-ground basins are located on the southeast portion of the site, and a proposed landscape here in the remaining 0.97 acre parcel. There's only one building proposed for the site, and it's approximately 22 feet, six inches in height, and is one-story. So this is a new model that McDonald's is using. They are utilizing their standard model here, but they did provide some accent features, colors, and materials that are in compliance with the greater master site plan here, specifically the base color cargo pants, those colors you're gonna see throughout the center, along with this wainscoting here at the bottom that is utilized throughout the center as well. A unique element that's being introduced is this accent material here. And then I'm gonna show you the drive-through elevations and rear elevations. And here's the color and materials palette for you. And this colors and material palette is in compliance with the rest of the elements in the center, with just some slight modifications for some individuality. And again, tonight, I'm requesting general site design, general elevation feedback, and approving the project administratively, and I'm here for questions.
Okay. Thank you, Sydney. Are there any questions from staff? Yes. Commissioner Blazer?
Just a quick question. You, you described the, I believe you said the surface retention is on the southeast corner of the parcel. Does the, the exhibit that you showed, showing the, the property next to it being developed, does that account for surface retention also?
Yes, it does. And we also on the line here, who could provide a little bit more in detail on that, is Tom Condon, our engineering manager, but yes, it does to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Yes, Commissioner Simon?
Sydney, thank you for the presentation. Quick question for you. I see the ingress/egress on the, what would be the north side, and then also the east onto Queen Creek. The planned development that's there for a drive-through, is there not an egress planned, maybe there between the two properties, for outflow?
And I apologize, I'm trying to move back to the site plan for reference. You're talking about the future development?
Correct.
On the east side?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the development. I mean, I understand that, that with the current development that would be there, the, the egress there to the north of the, or to the west of the property would actually function well there, but then once you put in, if there's future development, and they look at it from a drive-through perspective, it just seems like you're gonna get a lot of backup and issues in that parking lot if there's not an egress maybe between the two, and it may be too close to the intersection in order to accommodate. But, just a thought.
Yes, that's something that we can definitely discuss with the applicant and provide input for. Right now, there isn't anything planned. They're only doing that cross-access that goes on the southern portion of the parcel. I believe you have to be separated 220 feet, and I do not know if we have any of the traffic reviewers between those openings, so I don't know if it'd qualify up on the northern portion, but that is something that we can definitely look into and see what the possibilities are for future development scenarios, so don't create an issue, especially if we have another drive-through that is a high auto use.
Perfect, thank you. I'm good with the rest of it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes?
One question from my side, just given that this is adjacent to Perry High School, I guess would the applicant have plans to sort of, you know, maintain that nearly one acre between the school and this new McDonald's, you know, potential sort of loitering, garbage type of situation with this empty lot?
Commissioner, so to my plans, they don't have any future development plans for it, but they have been in communications with the school district specifically. That's something that we advise them to do in the beginning of this development process, so they have been coordinating with them in order to mitigate potential issues that may arise due to them being next to the school. So I can check back with them and see specifically if they've discussed that, but they have been in communications with the school district for those reasons.
Do you have anything? Okay, thank you. Is there any other feedback or any other comments? Commissioner Munt?
I was just going to comment on that it seemed appropriate for the administrative approval. If that was something we would discuss, it was one of their questions.
Okay, I agree. Okay, Sydney, as far as general site design, it sounds like everybody is okay with it. There's just a few more questions that are out there that cannot be answered, just because future development will dictate most of those. And, and they'll just have to deal with whatever is done on this project, I guess. And general elevations, it looks like a McDonald's, and what a fun color, Dockers. That's, that's pretty interesting. So, and then as far as approving the project administratively, that sounds fine, and I don't see that anybody has any, any concerns about that either. So, thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. Next on our agenda is Item Number 6, Town, the Town on Jermaine, GP 20-03, by Keith.
Chairman Bloomfield, members of the commission, good evening. I'm going to share my screen with you. Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. So the project now in front of you is the Town on Jermaine, which the applicant is requesting to change the land use classification and the zoning on a 14 and a half acre property that is located south and west of the southwest corner of Lindsey Road and Jermaine Road. So there's the prop, there's the site in highlighted in red, and it's currently, and it's not on the aerial, the aerial's not updated enough, but if you look over to, I don't know if you can see my arrow, maybe I'll turn on the little razor pointer. In this area here is Rockefeller Project that came before you a few years ago now, and there's an existing apartment complex here, and then some light industrial warehousing type buildings here on this site. So, the requested input tonight is, of course, your input on the proposed general plan amendment, and of course, on the proposed rezon that is before you. So I will go and explain those things. The general plan designation is being proposed to change from general off, general office to residential 14 to 25 dwelling units per acre. And the zoning designation on the site is being proposed to change from business park to multifamily medium. So you might notice that the zoning, the existing zoning and the existing general plan designation don't match up with each other all the way, and that's because during the recent 2020 general plan update, we consolidated some of the names of the general plan, land use categories. So the business park category, which it was before the general plan, got consolidated under the general office name, but the uses are still the same. So, so that's, I just wanted to explain that really quickly. So moving on to the general, to the, the actual site itself, like I said, it's 14 and a half acres approximately, and you access the site off of Jermaine Road. I'll go back a few slides so you can see that map again. Off of Jermaine Road down Silverado, which is a minor collector roadway, and it's the only way in and out of this development. And this is the conceptual site plan I wanted to show you. They are rezoning this, as I stated, to MFM. They are not proposing a planned area development. They are actually zoning conventional zoning, which is actually something we don't see too often. So they are proposing to comply with all town land development code requirements. So this is just a conceptual plan that I'm showing for you, and it will not be approved as part of this zone change. They will come in for a design review at a later date, but I thought it was important to give you some context and to show you what the site could develop into in the future as it moves forward through the design review stage. So all of these details are things that we will, we will be working on and working through with the developer as it, as it develops. So as far as the general plan designation is concerned, this site is located, its subject, it's located within the Gilbert and the 202 growth area, which identifies areas that are particularly suitable for, for multi-modal transportation infrastructure and improvements, and designed for a variety of uses such as residential and office and commercial and industrial type of uses. That's why you see a lot of these uses in this area. So the, the applicant has chosen to change it to residential due to several constraints on this property, such as the lack of frontage along Jermaine Road and relatively poor access off of one roadway, which is a minor collector, and the location adjacent to an RWDC, RWCD canal to the, to the, along the eastern boundary of the site, and the close proximity to an existing apartment complex. So that kind of makes developing this site into general office type uses challenging. The applicant has stated that the property owner, which has owned this property for 35 years, has been unable to generate interest from employment users the whole, pretty much the whole time they've owned this property. So the applicant believes multifamily is a more compatible use and, and provides a better buffer to the existing single-family homes and business park zoning along, along Jermaine Road. So, in your staff report, there's a bunch of goals and policies that are also supported by this general plan. I'm not gonna go over all of them, but in short, the rezoning request is to zone it to MFM, as I stated several times, and they want to develop 207 townhouse units with a gated community, about 14 and a half dwelling units per acre, or about 14, sorry, 14.25. And you can see in the bottom right-hand corner, there's, there's six clusters, up to, you know, four, five, and six clusters of buildings, lots of open space, and then a large buffer down along the southern property boundary adjacent to, it looks like about four single-family residents. So that buffer will be about 65 feet at its widest point in this location here, and then about 45 feet in its smallest location with an irrigate, existing irrigation ditch along the southern boundary here. And like I stated before, one primary access. We're trying to negotiate future cross-access for emergency purposes with the industrial piece to the east, to the west. So, we'll work those details out when it comes back in through the design review. But that is basically the request. Oh, one last thing. I almost forgot to mention this, is there was a, let me get back to my screen here. There was a neighborhood meeting that was held for this project on June 18th, a virtual neighborhood meeting, of course, given the times, and there was about seven residents who attended the meeting, or surrounding property owners, and they had some, some of the concerns that you see in front of you on the screen. Nothing that we would consider too major, but the applicant has taken note of these concerns and will definitely make sure that they get addressed when they come in for a DR application. So that is pretty much my presentation, and as I stated earlier, we would love to hear your feedback on the proposed general plan amendment and this proposed rezon. Thank you. And I'm hoping for any questions that you may have.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions, concerns about this one? Comments, feedback? Please. Commissioner Munt?
Thank you, Carl, or Commissioner Bloomfield.
That works.
I'm sorry, Chair, Chairman Bloomfield. Okay, it took me a second. So I just wanted to check, and I'm sure that this is something that will go through the review, but on the traffic studies and how that will be impacted, you know, having questionable ingress/egress on a number of townhomes that happens to be near a intersection that is jammed up quite often for multiple hours during the mornings and afternoon, and as well as the AZDOT plan for putting the highway ramps in that area. I just wanted to get an understanding of what the thoughts were on the amount of traffic that this is going to generate in that back area it's in.
Commissioner, Commissioner Munt, or Chairman Bloomfield, Commissioner Munt, that is something that I believe we're analyzing at this current moment, as we're still going through the first review of this project, of the rezon and the general plan amendment. So we have not yet issued comments concerning the TIA. So obviously, that is something that the town staff's going to analyze and, and look at those tra, the traffic generation and, you know, daily trips for this site. But we're still in the process of analyzing that, and we can definitely provide more information for you when this comes back for a public hearing. Hopefully that sheds a light on, on the traffic, but I don't know what those exact numbers are at this time.
Okay, yeah, and I guess I would just say my, I wanted to voice a concern there. I like the idea that they can find some manageable use for this land that they've held for quite some time. And I, so I don't have any objections there, I just think it's in a peculiar area that is difficult. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah.
And then you go ahead, Commissioner Simon.
So, Keith, thank you very much for the presentation. So I had the opportunity to speak with the applicant on this, and looking at the piece of property, I mean... And looking at the piece of property, I mean, it really is an island, so to speak. And, and when I think about what we've tried to do with the buffering of residential to, um, commercial or light industrial or what have you, I think that, that this makes sense to look at this property in this light and the product that they're proposing, I think would, would fit well there. I, I would like to see some of the traffic studies on that to just kind of see what's there and how that may impact that intersection. However, I feel like we, we could wait pretty much an eternity in this, this particular section. It makes sense to me to, to look at this from a down zoning perspective, just, just from what, what else is around it.
Okay. Commissioner Fay.
Keith, this is Bill Fay. This is a, I missed one of these points during my review last week, but it's a similar point to one of my questions about the Carson. This property only has one point of egress and access. And you touched on it, but we can't depend on the timing or what's going to come in to the west. Will the fire department either be getting a second point of access or will they be signing a variance to allow one point of access?
Chairman Bloomfield, Commissioner Fay, that is something that we've had preliminary discussions on with the applicant. We are currently working on with the adjacent property owner to the west to be able to secure a secondary access through their site. So that is something that is in the very early stages of discussion. And where, where, that is the goal right now is to get like a cross access type of easement to where they can access the site in an event of an emergency through that industrial piece to the west. So that is something that we are going to continue to work on, especially as we move into the design review phase of things as well. I think that answers your question.
Uh, not exactly, Keith. I mean, yes, I, I agree, that's a, that's a good direction to go. It's what I would do if I was a developer. But at, that property to the west is not under consideration. You have no control over the timeline. I mean, they could sign a cross access agreement and not come in for another 10 years. And you'd have one point of access for the fire department in those intervening 10 years. Will they be, will they, will the fire department be buying into that? Or will the fire department be getting something else if they insist on it?
Um, Commissioner Fay, that, that industrial site is currently under construction at the current time.
Apologies, my aerial photographs don't show that, never mind.
So, um, those drive aisles are currently being constructed and that, that roadway has been constructed, Silverado, all the way out to Jermaine. So that development's almost, it's close to being finished. So we're assuming that they're going to be able to get that cross access for emergency purposes that they will need in order to have more than, so that, to have more, that, to have a secondary access occasion in case it's needed.
Understood, that answers my question then.
Yep.
Anybody else? Commissioner Blazer.
Thank you. Um, I just want to echo everything that's been said, concerned about the traffic and what impact it will have. Also believe that the, you know, the access to the property adjacent to it is, is, is critical, but it, it certainly feels like the proper use for this piece of property.
Okay. Anybody else? Keith, if you'd had all the answers for traffic, I'd have asked for a motion. But, you know, it's, I'm just kidding, just kidding. Hey, um, I appreciate the, the presentation. I also had a chance to visit with the applicant. He makes a good case in that this is a, a good use for this area. And I, I tend to agree with it. We always are concerned about down zoning and taking out some business and, you know, commercial property. It's always a concern, but at the same time, high density development residential is, is not a bad use, especially this close to the Santan development area and, and all of that that's going on there. So for all of those reasons, we, we encourage you to keep moving forward. Quick question though, is it the same master developer? Because it's the same applicant that, that brought cases from the west of us here and this one in. Is it the same master developer and the same owner between those two parcels before they sold it?
Chairman Bloomfield, it's not the same master developer. It's a totally different development company, to my understanding.
Okay. I was just thinking that that would make, that would make that cross access agreement negotiation pretty easy, I would think. But just was curious about whether that, that could be a sticking point. And if they know the, the concerns and we express those same concerns here, they'll, they'll work on it and get it accomplished, I'm sure. All right, well, thank you, Keith, appreciate that. Okay, moving on, did you get what you needed, Keith?
Um, Chairman Bloomfield, yes, I believe so, thank you.
Okay. All right, item number seven is Banner Gateway, DR, case DR 20 dash 117. That's pretty impressive if this is 117th design review in 2020. That's pretty good, we'll take it, we'll take it. Thanks, Sydney.
Good evening, commissioners. The request before you tonight is DR 20 dash 117, Banner Gateway Expansion. The subject site is generally located at the northwest corner of Higley Road and Banner Gateway Drive, um, right south of the UX, uh, US 60, and it is zoned regional commercial. The Banner Gateway Medical Center Campus is a 56.4 acre site that has been steadily developing in phases since the mid 2000 with the hospital originally opening in the fall of 2007. The campus includes a hospital, cancer center and medical office building facilities. Additionally, with this application, you can see right here to the south, 6.7 acres will be added to the overall site plan of, um, for the Banner Gateway Center. This addition will bring the total site area to 63.5 acres. The requested input for you tonight is general site design feedback and general elevations feedback. We recently just completed first review and the comments were sent back to the applicant for review. So we're looking for your feedback to be incorporated into the second submittal. The Banner Gateway Medical Center is a 180 bed inpatient hospital that opened to the public in fall 2007. The original hospital consisted of one five story, um, patient tower and a two story diagnostic, diagnostic and treatment facility. The current expansion request before you tonight is everything that is highlighted here in red. So the addition of a second five story patient tower, which is going to be connected to the existing patient tower located here in blue to the south. The expansion of the existing D and T facility, both to the east and west. So that's outlined here in blue. So that's two stories with the basement. And then two, um, surface parking areas to accommodate the new development. So you can see one is located here, um, to the west. And then a second south of Banner Gateway Drive. Since you received the report, they did get an update from the development team and they all, uh, they are also planning to develop this future surface parking lot located on the northeast corner, and that would be an additional 90 spaces to be added. So that was not included in your report, but that is something they're considering in the second submittal I wanted to make you aware of. Um, and then moving on, I'm just going to take these segments of the site plan and walk through it with you. The new five story patient tower with the basement is proposed to include approximately 181 new patient beds at build out. The tower will initially include 85 beds for phase one and a shelf space that will allow for an additional 96 beds to be built at, um, build out or phase two. The patient tower will be attached to the existing 180 bed tower to the east. Um, and they will create this enclosed courtyard area once they are attached. And it also will be attached to the expansion to the D and T facility that is located here. So the existing D and T facility is two stories. Um, and the new expansion will also match that two stories and also include a basement. And moving on to the south, this is just a parking field. So here we're just displaying the parking field. Since there will be a lot of pedestrians crossing in order to get to the hospital facilities, the applicants did provide a pedestrian walkway located here across Banner Gateway Drive. And they will be signaling that with a hawk, um, in order to make that nice and safe for the residents. Moving on to the landscape plan, a total of 50% of the night, uh, the net site area will be landscaped, which meets the landscape percentage. Landscaping is provided along the perimeters of the new parking areas within the landscape islands and parking lots and allow along the south side street frontage of Banner Gateway Drive, abutting the parking lot and as foundation landscaping, abutting the new buildings. In the first review, we did request for additional landscaping to be located here on the, um, western portion. Um, moving on to the grading, uh, grading and drainage plan, the runoff from the new, um, tower and D and T facility expansion will be accommodated through a combination of new and existing above ground retention basins. Uh, the new above ground retention basins have been provided to the west of the new tower and in the landscape areas around the perimeter of the proposed surface parking lots. The new surface parking lot proposed to the south of Banner Gateway Drive has new proposed above ground retention bases provided along the perimeters of the parking lot in those landscape areas. The applicant has provided some renderings, um, to give you some, uh, conceptual visualizations of the site. So these renderings include the new, uh, expansion, um, along with the existing facilities to see how this is going to cohesively develop and look in the end. I just provided some, um, quick snippets of the existing, uh, D and T facility and tower just to give a little bit of a primer before we move into the elevations. The colors and materials proposed are in line with what is existing in the center. As you can see, they use quite a bit of Ephesus and then seven different types of natural stones along with that, um, weathered steel as that accent material. As we move into the elevations, you'll see there's quite a few build, uh, windows that, um, front the buildings. So as we move through the elevations, this is not all new construction. They split it up and attached it. So you'll see that there's, um, indicators for new construction and existing. So you can see how this is all going to cohesively develop. This is the north and south elevations of the facility. As you can see for these elevations, they are utilizing the Ephesus, um, and the two different taupe colors. Moving on to the west and east elevations, this utilizes more of that stone, um, materials layered and a, a large vertical massings. And then this is internal within that courtyard area that is created in between those two patient towers. And this is also in the courtyard as well. And then the courtyard as well. And I am available for questions. And again, the input that I am requesting is general site design feedback and general elevations feedback, so we can get that back to the applicant for second submittal.
Okay. Thank you, Sydney. I think Amy Thames is the only one that speaks faster than you. You, you plowed some pretty significant ground there. Anybody have any comments or questions, feedback? Commissioner Munt.
Thank you, Chairman Bloomfield. Uh, I just want to say that the elevations look really nice. They blend quite well. And I, I really actually like the way that they've alternated a lot of heights and different depths that, uh, it, it doesn't look like a box and it's, it's actually very well done. So, um, I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Commissioner Munt. Anybody else?
Chairman.
Please, Commissioner.
Sydney, this is, uh, Bill. I, I just, this isn't really so much a comment about the development, but I was relooking at some of those, uh, traffic or parking calculations. And on your, um, parking, on one of your parking sheets, it makes reference to parking requirement one per 3.9 beds. And I think it actually is 3.9 per one bed, which is, I think, why my, well, one of several reasons, my calculations were all screwed up. And I, I couldn't find it, but I think it's in the land development code that way. So I think they're quoting it, but one or the other is wrong. The numbers are right, but the, the way it's stated in the table, I think, is wrong.
Thank you, Commissioner. I will look into that and verify. This one is through, um, numbers out of an administrative use permit that was approved in 2009. So they're different than our requirements in our LDC, but I will definitely verify with the applicant to ensure, um, that all of the parking counts are correct when it comes in for formal submittal and provide you an update in that report.
To be clear, I don't think that the numbers are incorrect. I think the numbers are correct, the totals are correct, the design's correct. I think the way, kind of like the, uh, the explanation up on the table is, is just what's wrong.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Sydney. As, as far as this, I, I know from Banner Gateway being, they, they kept a marketing office in my office when they first started this hospital. And the budget back then was a million dollars a bed. So I welcome the 180 to $200 million investment being put into the town. And, and it looks good. And it's been amazing to me how that campus has expanded over the years and, and they continue to do so. And, um, you know, right now you drive by and there's a whole lot of empty parking spaces. But pre-COVID, it was always busy and always full over there. So, um, while that seems like an extraordinary amount of parking, I think it's, I think it's right on the money and what it needs to be. So, thank you. So there is no feedback other than it, it looks good. They're keeping in, in the same vein as they always have. And please continue to move forward, it looks great. Thanks.
Thank you, Chair.
All right. Item number eight, we're going back to Keith. It's case Z 20 dash 07 Mercy Center PAD.
Chairman Bloomfield, members of the commission, can you, hopefully you can see my screen, my new presentation here. Can you guys see it?
Yes, we can.
Fantastic, thank you. So this next project, the mine is, is for Mercy Center. Their staff is currently processing the first review of both, of a, both, of a zone chain or a PAD amendment application and a design review application. So we're in, we're in first review. We haven't provided them comments yet on, on everything. So I just wanted to keep that in mind. We're still working on a few things, but we at least wanted to bring it before you to get some of your input and your feedback on this project. So for those who don't know, the site is located just south of Gilbert Mercy Hospital at the southeast corner of Mercy Road in Val Vista. And you can see it's all highlighted in orange there. The requested inputs that we wanted to get from you tonight is concerning the elevations and the articulation of them and revise, and the revised site design and traffic circulation. So the development plan, um, I just wanted to show this to you. And I also have with this development plan or sap slash site plan, if you will, I also have, I'm showing you the property to the south. So this property to the south, um, that you're seeing on your screen is also owned by this developer. So it's all of this here, and this is a project that I don't, that you should be seeing come before you soon, um, or you, maybe you already have. But this right here is the subject site, but I just wanted to give you a little context of where it's located. So the site is, is about 11 and a half, 11.35 acres. And if you recall, this came before you in the month of April, March, March, maybe March, for a PAD to establish the zoning for the site. So the zoning on the site is the porch, this half of the portion, west half of the portion along Val Vista is general commercial zoning. And this back half or the east half of the site is business park zoning. So they came in and they got approved a PAD under different ownership. And they asked for some deviations, zero foot setbacks or landscape setbacks here along, along Mercy. And I believe it was like a 10 to 15, 10 foot setbacks here along the east boundary and zero foot setbacks along the southern boundary. So they had some deviations that were approved. Since that time, since April, this site has changed hands. It's been sold to a new developer who obviously is wishing to develop it completely differently. So that's why it's coming back before you for a PAD amendment to completely redesign the site. So as far as the site is concerned, along Val Vista Road, which is phase one, this whole white area is phase one. And then the shaded part is phase two. But within phase one, they would like to develop, um, these are actually two buildings. They're, they're approximately 22,000 square feet a piece. Actually, one is 22,000 and the other one's 25,000. This one's 25,000. It's, it's actually one building where the drive through comes through the middle of the building, on the ground floor, of course. And then the top level of the building goes over the top of the drive through. So each building is that way. It looks like four buildings, but it's really two. So that's a very unique design that we have not seen here in the town of Gilbert before. And then within the phase two, they would like to construct in the future two five story medical office buildings. And they're about 75, 78,000 square feet a piece. And then also a parking garage. We don't know how many spaces the parking garage will have in it yet. That's something that we'll, we'll get later. That's something that we'll get later. Actually, during the design review, we should get some of that information as the design review process moves forward. So that's the site nutshell. It's got all these access points. It's got two off of Val Vista and two off of Mercy. This one off of Mercy over here in the north, what east corner of the site is pretty much already constructed for, it was constructed recently as there's a site to the east, an office building that's being constructed right now. So they'll have access there. But a few concerns that staff has that we wanted to bring up to you, I mentioned two of them in the staff report and one I did not, which I will bring up. Two concerns is, is we have some concerns with the configuration of this drive, these two entrances here and the configuration of them and the turn here. We feel that it's kind of a weird geometry, a weird turning movement. It doesn't go straight through like it was previously proposed to do. So we're concerned with that turn here because we feel that this drive aisle here that I'm highlighting, that I've got my cursor over, it's in yellow, will be a pretty highly traveled drive aisle due to these medical office buildings. And we're also concerned with people backing out into a busy drive aisle. So those are two concerns with this drive aisle and the entrance configurations here. And then the other concern that's not mentioned in your staff report that we really wanted to bring up, and we didn't determine this until after we wrote the staff report, is a few concerns from our traffic department on, so one other, they've reviewed the TIA and it's kind of a joint TIA between this property and the one to the south that you can see on the screen in front of you. So the traffic study considered all potential, all these two sites, and it identified traffic storage concerns based on the turning movements estimated to come into this site and the amount of through traffic that already exists on Val Vista Drive. And I highlighted a couple of the concerns here. So one concern is that there's not enough storage here, the turn lane's not long enough to come into this site. And then another concern is, and now this is for the site to the south, which is not part of this discussion, it's not part of this approval moving forward, but there's also concerns with the storage of this turn lane here coming into Melrose. And then town traffic, they also have another concern with left-hand turning movements off of Melrose coming out onto Val Vista and the queuing of that could back up enough to where it will not allow people coming in off of Val Vista to turn left into this entrance here. So those are some of the concerns from a traffic standpoint that we are working with the applicant on as we go through the design review process. The applicant, as far as we know, the applicant is willing to mitigate these concerns as much as possible. They're willing to lengthen out the storage capacity of these turn lanes, and those are comments that we're making through the design review. And we do have one of our traffic engineers attending a meeting tonight and he can get more into the technical aspects of things, but I just wanted to let you know that we do have these concerns and that our engineers do the best they can to estimate future conditions. And we are going to be working with the applicant to try and resolve these concerns as much as we possibly can. So I just wanted to bring that forward to you at this time. So in total, this whole development will have about 205,000 square feet of building space at the end of the day, which is in the Val Vista, Mercy, Val Vista Medical Growth Area, which is density and intensity and five-story medical office buildings is what the vision is for this area. So the applicant is proposing a development that is on par with the Mercy, with the Val Vista Medical Growth Area. Here's the landscape plan. Just wanted to show you this really quick. It'll be well landscaped, a lot of landscaping along the frontages and along the perimeter within the parking areas, lots of trees and drought tolerant shrubs and trees. And then we'll see phase two here. I've asked them to show the landscaping in phase two area as well. It's a comment I'm making in design review. The building elevations, like I said earlier, are a very unique building that we have not seen here in the town of Gilbert before where the drive-through goes through the middle of the buildings with the second story above it. A lot of the materials are CMU-type materials with some limestone and a lot of windows on these buildings, a lot of high-quality materials, a bunch of metal canopies. The buildings are about 37 feet tall approximately. So here's the front of the buildings that face the parking area and they're pretty, a lot of glass. So the idea is there's going to be retail on the ground floor and offices on the top floors. And of course, with a couple of drive-throughs. So that shops A and shops B, the buildings look almost identical. There are some minor differences in the buildings, but they pretty much have the same cohesive design theme with them. So here you go. Here's the front side that faced, or the backside that faces the parking area. And as far as the drive-throughs being along Val Vista, we're planning on, they have these little screen walls here with shrubs and vines on them. We're going to make sure there's plenty of landscaping along Val Vista Road to screen the impact of the drive-throughs adjacent to Val Vista. There's colors and materials, lots of brick, some limestone, some cladding type wood composite board. So lots of different materials and then some paint colors, some grays and some whites and a little bit of bronze coloring for like canopies and so forth. Oh, and here's the development plan again of the actual site that's in question or that's before you and you can see the phasing a little clearly, a little more clearly here with this site plan. So as I've stated, we would like to get some input from you concerning the elevations and the articulation of them and any general concerns or any other comments you may have concerning the revised site design and traffic circulation that I've concerns that I've already pointed out. So that concludes my presentation and if you have any questions, I will do my best to answer them.
Okay, Keith. Thank you. I have one question just right off the bat. You say there's 255,000 square feet going in right now with the proposed PAD. What did we approve two or three months ago? How many square feet in this whole development?
Chairman Bloomfield, members of the commission, the previous PAD approved about 75,000 square feet of space. So way less. And this is, and so this development, as like I said, with the increased square footage of total building space is more along the lines of the vision of Mercy or the Val Vista Medical Growth Area. So we're fairly content with what's being proposed so far, so.
Sure, sure. No, I just wanted to know what the comparison was. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Okay. Chairman, any comments? Feedback you can give? Thoughts? Please, Commissioner Blazer.
Thank you, Keith. Just curious, when the town would expect this traffic storage solution to be put in place? With phase one or would the expectation be that that be addressed in phase two?
Chairman Bloomfield, Commissioner Blazer, I would assume that, I don't know 100% for sure, and maybe Clint Emery can talk more about this, but I believe we're looking to resolve these issues now and to come up with the solutions for the turn lanes and the additional storage that is needed now during phase one, is my understanding. But maybe Clint can talk more about that.
Chairman, if I may interrupt, I can get our traffic engineer Clint and Emery on the line in just a moment. Clint, I will unmute you now.
Yes, hello. Yeah, this is Clint. Yeah, thank you for inviting me today. Yeah, I can answer that question. So the developer wants to do the, all the improvements now for the whole site, so they just kind of want to do everything in a one-shot. So this is when they're looking to do any off-site improvement.
Okay, great. I think that's, I think that's good. My only comments on the elevations are, I like them. A lot of, there's a lot of high-end finishes and I would love to see those high-end products be a part of the building and the elevation. I think it's, I think it'll be a great addition to the town.
Okay. Thank you. Please.
Chairman, I would just echo, I actually also agree. It's a very interesting and unique design, but I really like it. But certainly the focus here has to be on the traffic flow. You know, likely this is going to be a medical purpose type of building with a lot of usage, so we definitely need to make sure that's well covered and flows well.
Commissioner Munt.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to talk about the traffic as well and that I think that on the scaling we're looking at what is on the north, the north side of the property. But when you go westward across Val Vista, you then have also a car wash of Dutch Brothers and soon-to-be Culvers with delicious custard. Now that Dutch Brothers already backs up to where that middle road across the way that's not shown on this gets completely inundated with traffic. And then as people are coming in and out of that car wash, and the QT, I should add, which is, has a high traffic. So, and I'm sure that this is being covered, but, and I don't want to completely inundate the meeting with nothing but traffic discussions, but that intersection is another one and maybe it's because I drive through it and it's quite jammed up. And what my concern is, is with the egress out of here onto Val Vista, as people are coming on the other way from those other establishments that have a high turnover, the people trying to take a left and then people coming out of there, it could just be somewhat dangerous. So I really like the idea. I think it goes well within the plan for the Mercy area there, but the traffic, there is some concerns. So I'm sure you're covering them, but just wanted to echo that.
Keith, I have one question and it's in regard to the drive-throughs. Am I getting it right that all the drive-through and the queuing for the drive-through is coming right through the middle of that building? And so when they exit, they're coming by those parking spaces toward that middle aisle? My concern was if it's going backwards to that, that, you know, you've got people queuing and in line and blocking off those parking spaces, but if it's going the other way, would you help me out with that one?
Yeah, Chairman Bloomfield, members of the commission, yeah, that, so the queuing, so for the shops B building, the queuing starts here. They'll come in this way and they'll exit out this way. Yes, and they will be exiting out in front of all these parking stalls. But the queuing, we have expressed some concerns with this, with the stacking here with these parking stalls. And that's a comment that I'm still going to make in my first review comments. So we are a little concerned with these parking stalls here. And the queuing on this one starts this way, comes here and comes back out, back through the middle of the building, just like the other one. But yeah, we do have a few concerns with the parking stalls here that could be blocked by a super busy drive-through. That's something that we're going to try and address with the applicant. I don't know what the solution is right now, but it's something that we're definitely going to have discussions on and try and resolve. I hope that answers your question and I provided a little clarity and didn't confuse you too much.
No, that's perfect. You answered my question. And so of all of the site plan, I really wasn't concerned about the high-volume traffic aisle that you've highlighted. I mean, it has, it appears to have the turning radius and to my way of thinking, so many turns like that will force people to kind of slow down. And so I think it helps overall. However, I understand why they did it that way, too. It's because they're just trying to get traffic count, or parking counts up because laying out that much parking for that much additional building is going to be problematic. And so they're just trying to accommodate that the best way they can. And I'm going to leave it to the traffic engineer, the town staff to deal with that, but I personally don't understand, excuse me, I personally understand why they have it parked that way and I'm okay with it. So you answered the question about queuing and you see my concern about the parking spaces being blocked off, but with it not always being restaurants coming in and out of there and people are coming in for the office for the day, if they park over there, that may not be that big of an issue. But here again, it's a concern that I see on the site plan and layout. So hopefully that gives you everything you need. Is there any other comments that anybody wants to make? Commissioner Anderson, you've been amazingly quiet tonight. Well, not uncharacteristically quiet, but you know.
It's just nice to have somebody else run the show and everybody's doing a great job up here and I haven't had anything new to add, but as soon as I have something new to add, I will be sure to speak up.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, Keith.
Okay, Keith, I think we're done. And I would, what we have now on our agenda is to discuss the regular meeting agenda. I think that we have, for the most part, everything is on the consent agenda, but we've received some information today and by email, and it looks like we have some residents here. I don't have any comment cards. There is one. And so we're going to have to make changes to that. And I'm, is everybody in the audience that wishes to speak, is it here for item number 17? Raise your hand if it's for item number 17. Very good. We're going to have to pull that one off. The couple in the back, which item are you here about? Is item 17 as well? Okay. We have, we had one more item on the study, on the study session, item number nine, but it was tabled to another time, talking about the Heritage District and the guidelines and the updates there for the LDC and the code there. So that will be tabled for another time. Is there somebody here to, we wouldn't hear on that tonight anyway, would, no, because it's a study session item.
We would not. Staff is recommending that you move item.
I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Speak louder.
Hear me now.
Nope.
Now you can. Nope. We're recommending that you move item 17 off and also we're to close the present in Nancy Davidson if you're holding off her.
Okay. All right.
Chairman, can I, I actually have something new to ask.
Oh, very good.
So item 25, it's been, it's on public hearing, non-consent, and it's asked to be continued to November's hearing. Can we move that one over to consent if no one's here to hear it?
I agree. I think that can be. Okay. So we're making a trade of item number 17 to be pulled off and item number 25 to be put into the consent agenda. And we will, with that, we will almost adjourn study session.
With every 20.
Can I?
I'm sorry, would that be 25 or 24?
Will go into consent agenda and 17 will be pulled off of the consent agenda to a regular hearing. Okay.
Do I come down there?
Hey, I'll try to do it correctly this time. After I say, I state your name, just state your name. I, Carl Bloomfield.
I, Carl Bloomfield.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
And the ordinance of the Town of Gilbert, Maricopa County, Arizona.
And the ordinance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies.
And that I will faithfully and impartially. And the ordinance of the Town of Gilbert, Maricopa County, Arizona.
The ordinance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of the Office of a Town of Gilbert Planning Commission member. Okay, the duties of the Office.
The duties of the Office.
Of a Town of Gilbert Planning Commission member.
Of a Town of Gilbert Planning Commission member.
In Gilbert, Arizona.
Gilbert, Arizona.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God, or so do I affirm. Thank you.
Okay, with that, now we can adjourn, correct? And we will, we'll resume, we realize it's 6:15, but give us about five minutes and we'll be back to the regular meeting agenda. It should be short because of so many things on the consent agenda. So, thank you. I hate these masks.
You don't want to have it come up and then you.
Do it for five minutes or so going into a store, a bit longer than that, it just drives me nuts. Haven't, haven't needed to so far, so. Up here, I just don't want to. Are we about ready?
Yes, we're ready.
Sure. Okay. Welcome, welcome, everybody, to the regular meeting of the Town of Gilbert Planning Commission. We have a whole set of newly sworn-in members of the commission here tonight. And first item that we need to do is the pledge of allegiance. Eva, will you lead us in that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
There with all the new members, I need the cheat sheet here.
That's a case of.
Oh, Vice Chair, Jan Simon.
Here.
Commissioner Mund.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Fay.
Here.
Commissioner Blazer.
Here.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Chairman Bloomfield.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, we've discussed the agenda. I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda. Vice Chair.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, moving item 17 to non-consent and item 25 to consent.
Okay, we've got a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Move on into, into the communications. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town, but not on the agenda. The commission board response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Is there, are there any citizens here who wish to communicate this time? Please come up.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Doralese Machado-Liddell. I'm a Gilbert resident. The design guidelines have been discussed throughout the 30-year Heritage District redevelopment history. Private property owners have been living with the threat of imminent domain condemnation and uncertainty about their private property rights. The town may claim that they have never or rarely used condemnation. However, if you read the Redevelopment Commission and Town Council minutes dating back to 1989, you may find the tactics used to acquire property and the instances where it took place. On March 22, 2000, Planning and Zoning Commission study session relating to the adoption of the ordinance creating the Heritage District Architectural Guidelines, Chairman Linda Edwards stated that since the guidelines are now coming forward as ordinances, she wondered if the standards for the Redevelopment Commission are different than what is required for the rest of the town. Because if it is different, a code amendment will need to be implemented for all areas. On July 16, 2008, during a planning commission regular meeting to establish design guidelines applicable to the Heritage District, the senior planner stated, "The desire is to produce a document that is what the town wants, what the development community needs, and also that does not have any impact on Prop 207. The desire is to produce unique, interesting guidelines that are incentive-based rather than mandatory." Once again, Prop 207 is the protection of private property rights. The current Heritage District Design Guidelines clearly states, "The use of the words shall and must have been purposely avoided within the specific guidelines." It further states that establishes Town of Gilbert suggested principles for designing quality downtown development. The town staff has stated that they have created a comparison of the 2010 versus the 2020 guidelines to demonstrate that the very minor changes that have been made to the Lacy Track requirements. I do not believe that making design guidelines a mandatory legal requirement is a minor change. This change affects my property, private property rights. I did not purchase my property with mandatory design guidelines with a government homeowners association, with the requirement that I submit my custom building plans to the Design Review Commission or the Redevelopment Commission. Once the area is no longer a state redevelopment under the state redevelopment laws, design guidelines will still be in fact, in effect. Once again, this affects my property, private property rights. My private property rights are being treated differently based on my zip code. Such, such actions represent a discriminatory use of the land development code, and the design guidelines is the avenue in which it takes place. In closing, I ask that the guidelines remain just that, a suggested guideline. And thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you for coming tonight and expressing your concerns. We appreciate that. Okay. Report from council liaison and current events. He is attending remotely tonight, so.
Councilmember September, are you available? Councilmember September, you're on.
Thank you. I, I stepped away. Am I, am I speaking about something particular?
Come.
I had to get some water.
Sure. Councilmember September, we are, it's, it's your turn on the agenda for the report from the council liaison on current events. Do you have any?
Oh, oh, great. Thank you. Um, no, I don't have any current events from the council. I just want to thank all of our new planning commissioners and our return, or existing planning commissioners for serving. I can't be there tonight because any member in my home has COVID. They're almost over it. They got it Saturday, but I'm quarantined until sometime next week. I'm negative. My wife is negative. Nobody, nobody else has it. But unfortunately, I couldn't be there tonight. So that's the only update from council they have.
Okay. Thank you. Next on our agenda is recognition of outgoing planning commissioners, David Caveney and Commissioner Alternates Phil Alabrandi and Nathan Mackin. Nathan Mackin is not here tonight, but if I could have David Caveney and Phil Alabrandi meet me at the, down on the floor, I'd be, I'd appreciate that. I'd appreciate that.
Gentlemen, it's been a pleasure to serve with you on the Planning Commission, and I really wish that this would have been done with the old, with the former chairman. I would have been more comfortable with that. But Commissioner Alabrandi, you stepped in when you needed to and when it was needed on the commission as people left, and we appreciate your service. And you've been here for about two years, correct? And Commissioner Cavaney, you've been a longtime friend and associate and leader in cohort and, not really a cohort in crime, but certainly a mentor. And I appreciate all of your involvement in the community and to be a friend of mine. I really, really appreciate that and value your input and your support on the council, on this commission. We do have some gifts for you, some parting gifts, so to speak. And I appreciate staff for putting this together, but there's a coin in here, Town of Gilbert coin, that's in a nice presentation box. Each of you will get one of those and a certificate. And let's not forget the stack of cupcakes that you get to take home. So each of you have yours here and and of course, your name plaque that we've all been staring at for the last however number of years. How many years did you serve? Eight years. Wow, that's really great. So there's your stuff. I would, I can give it to you. Thank you again, everyone. Enjoy the first Wednesday of every month off for the next little while. Think of us. Despite what you just saw, I will never run for office, so. I'm saying never. Okay, we are on to the public hearing consent items. All items listed below are considered the public hearing consent calendar. The commission or board may by a single motion approve any number of items where after opening the public hearing, no person requests the item to be removed from the consent calendar. If such a request is made, the commissioner board shall then withdraw the item from the public hearing consent calendar for the purpose of public discussion and separate action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. At this time, we have items, the following items on this consent calendar. Item number fifteen, case DR twenty-one thirteen Mercedes Benz of Gilbert Parking Lot Expansion. Item number sixteen, DR twenty-sixty-six, the Carson. Item number seventeen, DR twenty-seventy-one, Guadalupe McQueen Retail. That one will be removed from this consent calendar, thank you. Item number eighteen is DR twenty-eighty-seven PB Bell Gilbert Commons, which will continue to November fourth as part of this consent agenda. Item number nineteen, UP twenty-zero-five Alta Gilbert at Cooley Station, which will continue to November fourth. Item number twenty, DR twenty-fourty-six Alta Gilbert at Cooley Station, which will continue to November fourth. Item number twenty-one, UP twenty-two-six Speedway Convenience Fuel Dispensing continues to November fourth. Item number twenty-two, UP twenty-two-seven Speedway Convenience Twenty-four Hours Operation continues to November fourth. Item number twenty-three, UP twenty-two-eight Speedway Convenience Linted Service Restaurant continues to November fourth, twenty-twenty. And item number twenty-four, DR twenty-ninety-four Speedway Convenience, which will continue to November fourth, twenty-twenty. And item number twenty-five, DR nineteen-one-twenty-eight Trilogy at Power Ranch, which will continue to November fourth, twenty-twenty. Vice Chair, do we have a vote?
Vice Chair, I need to, I have a conflict on item sixteen and need to abstain by my vote on that one.
Okay, we will do this in two motions then. Can you do that, Vice Chair?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, items fifteen, sixteen, eighteen, nineteen.
Let's make the motion for the first one. That we have him off and then we'll bring it for the rest of them.
Okay.
Okay, so item number sixteen.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, item sixteen, DR twenty-sixty-six, the Carson.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Jones, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items fifteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Simon.
I'll second that as well.
Commissioner Jones is a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, we are now down to item number seventeen. DR twenty-seventy-one, Guadalupe McQueen Retail, Sydney Bethel. We will have your presentation and then we'll hear from members of the public.
Good evening, Commissioners. So I'm just going to briefly run through the presentation so we can allow the members of the public to speak. Since yesterday, we also, in addition to the residents that you see in council chambers, received ten comment cards in opposition of the project. They're not descriptions of specifically what the concern is. We will hear that tonight, but I just wanted to notify everyone that there was ten additional people that were in opposition. So the subject site is approximately three point two eight acres, zone community commercial, and is located at the southeast corner of McQueen and Guadalupe's roads. The site is the last vacant commercial corner at the McQueen and Guadalupe intersection. The request before you tonight is a design review request, and we're requesting that you approve the findings of fact and approve DR twenty-seventy-one, Guadalupe McQueen Retail. There are a total of three buildings planned for the subject site with a variety of uses proposed, including restaurant, retail, and vehicle services light. Pad A is located up here at the hard corner of the development. This is a two thousand square foot proposed Starbucks building that user has been identified by the applicants. If you move to the south, this is Pad B. This is a four-suite development proposed to have both retail and restaurant users in there with a drive-through. And then if we move on to the east side, you will see Building C here, which is approximately five thousand five hundred square feet, and it's proposed vehicle service building specifically for light service. There has not been a user identified yet, but that is the intended use. As you can see here, there are two points of access proposed for the site. The primary access is a right-in, right-out access off of McQueen Road, and a secondary full-motion access is provided off of Guadalupe Road. The site contains ample pedestrian connectivity through internal sidewalks that connect to the existing sidewalks that have already been constructed on both McQueen and Guadalupe roads. There's a solid eight-inch-high screen wall that's been provided on the southern-eastern perimeter to the site. This provides some required separation from the existing commercial developments that are located on the east and the south called McQueen Landing. This recently completed development, more is close to being completed, and they are single-family detached homes over there. A total of forty percent of the net area is landscape, which exceeds the required landscaping percentage of the site. I wanted to show you guys these exhibits to note the ample landscaping buffers that have been provided along the perimeters of the site. Moving on to the grading drainage plan, the retention proposes a combination of underground storage tanks, which you can see here on the northern portion of the site plan, and above ground retention basins located in the perimeter landscape areas. The proposed grading and drainage plan generally meets the requirements of the Town of Gilbert Engineering Division and was approved by them. Moving into the elevations, I will go through each one of the proposed buildings. All of them are one-story in height and between twenty to about twenty-two feet tall. The first one here, which I outlined, is the proposed Starbucks building. So this one you will note is a little bit cooler toned, a little bit more modern in design than the other two buildings, but it does connect with the other two developments. You will see that they all utilize the same tan stucco along with this brick veneer located here at the base. Moving on to Pad B, which is the shops with the drive-through, this one does have a little bit of a warmer color palette that you'll see and a little bit of a different design, but still has that base colors and materials as seen in the other building. And the final building is the Pad C, which is intended for that automotive use. And as you can see, these are the bays on the west elevation. They are proposing nine bays for this development, and then right adjacent to that is the small office area. And here's an overview of all the colors and materials being used. It's a very diverse color palette that complements some of the surrounding designs and architecture. And staff is recommending approval, and as I previously stated, with the understanding that there are members of the public that are here to speak and to allow them some time to voice their concerns. And I am here for questions.
Okay, thank you, Sydney. Would the, is the applicant available and would he like to speak as well?
On the line, we should have both Neil Fieser and Jennifer Hill. Neil Fieser is from Archea Architecture and is part of the architectural team, and Jennifer Hill from Diversified Partners, part of the development team. So I don't know if one of them would like to speak. There may also be Scott Hines, who is also from the development team on the phone.
I will unmute Neil Fieser and see if he wishes to speak.
Neil Fieser here. No, nothing to add at this time. You know, I'd like to use the time to address the neighbors' comments.
Very good.
Jennifer Hill and see if she wishes to speak.
I concur with Neil. Let's afford the opportunity to the residents, and we'll be happy to address any concerns.
Okay, thank you. We'll just move forward then. Okay, we have residents Jason Kay, who is opposed to this item and does wish to speak. Look forward to you coming up. Please state your town of, your town of residence and you have three minutes. Just a second, let's make sure we get your microphone on. Your time will reset, it'll be fine.
My name is Jason Kay. I'm a Gilbert resident. I live in McQueen Landing. It's a brand-new community with mostly families with young children. I'm here today because I'm extremely concerned, because I learned the proposal contains a nine-bay auto collision repair center that is less than a hundred feet from the children's playground and community pool. Additionally, there are numerous homes that are within one hundred feet of this nine-bay auto collision repair. My home is less than a hundred yards away. There are nine auto repair centers within one mile of this site. Odor due to cause, due to chemical usage. OSHA lists chemical uses as the number one hazard followed by noise. According to OSHA, door skimming hammer can be as low as one hundred and thirty-five decibels. A hundred feet away, that is ninety-five decibels. According to the US Department of Energy, tightening lug nuts on automotives can be up to one hundred and twenty decibels. At a hundred feet, that is seventy-one to eighty decibels. These noise levels violate Gilbert's noise ordinance of fifty-five decibels in residential area during business hours. Landscaping, I feel, is a little shoddy around the, from the neighbors' side. They do more to prevent the eyesore of the street than the actual community. These, I do live in Gilbert. I know Gilbert's values. The values of this town was the main reason we moved here. We're the safest, one of the safest cities in America and one of the best places for children to grow up in. Do you agree with me that children should not grow up next to a nine-bay auto collision repair shop? I know it's easier just to agree with them and go forward, but I beg of you to think of the children who have to grow up next to the noise and smells and what else could be around there. This proposal should not move forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Emilio Gonzalez. He is opposed to this item and does not wish to speak. Samantha Mott is opposed to this item and does wish to speak. I hope I got your last name right, I'm not sure.
Yes, you did.
Okay.
It's Mott, like the applesauce.
Okay. You made me hungry all of a sudden.
So I'm Samantha. I live in Gilbert at the McQueen Landing community that was mentioned. I'm also opposed to this plan due to some of the same concerns that Jason had. The noise, the smell, especially with the proposed building being right on the other side of the wall from a children's playground and a pool, as well as close to how many houses there are right behind there. I don't have as many cool facts as he did, but that's why I am opposed to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have Clark Collier, who is opposed to this item and does wish to speak. Clark?
Evening Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I moved to Gilbert just about six months ago. I'm actually a Westsider. I was over in Glendale for twenty-five years, retired from a career over there, and chose to move out to Gilbert because of the family values of Gilbert and because I have friends that live in Gilbert and I know about the community and did my research. To be frank with you, living in McQueen Landing, the only thing I'm really opposed to, I knew it was planned for retail in the vacant lot next to me, but the auto center causes me a lot of concern. Nine-bay auto center seems like something that should be in downtown Phoenix, not necessarily Gilbert. Did all the homes in McQueen Landing are two stories? So they're going to see right over that view fence not only the unsightly vehicles over there, but also hear a lot of the noise. I have concerns about the noise like Jason and Samantha. And again, all the homes are two stories. Quite frankly, like I said, I did as much research on that land as I could to see, you know, who owned it prior and some potentials in the future. Didn't really consider an auto center. If I had known that, I probably would have thought twice before I had bought my residence. Again, no problem with the Starbucks or the dining or the retail, but I think the auto center falls a little bit outside of retail. I guess technically it is, but to me, it kind of falls a little bit outside that realm and doesn't really belong next to a neighborhood, in my opinion. So I'd appreciate some consideration in the matter and thank you for the time to address you.
Thank you, Clark. We appreciate you coming and taking your time to help out. Okay, item number seventeen, we also have Paya Gupta, I guess, I'm hopeful, is opposed to this item and does not wish to speak, but expresses safety concerns. Sunat Daman, Daman, does not wish to speak. I'm assuming that it's opposed, that this person is opposed to this item as well for a lot of the, for safety concerns for kids and noise. Okay? And Mukta Sharma is opposed to this item for safety concerns and for kids in the community. Do you wish to speak? No? Okay. So we have several people who have safety concerns and noise concerns and close proximity. And we will go back to the applicants and see if they have any feedback, anything they want to add.
I'll open up the microphone to Jennifer Hill.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. The plan that was submitted does actually show the light automotive with nine bays. However, we actually don't have a user in mind for that building at this time. It was one of the proposed uses that we have had offers, but nothing is moving forward with an automotive user currently. We've had a preschool in that same spot with a play area. We've had office. Also, where the automotive use has been proposed, we've had urgent care. We've had several different uses. It was just one of the proposed uses that we did receive an It was just one of the proposed uses that we did receive an offer on, but nothing is moving forward currently. Thus far, we have Starbucks, we have a national sandwich user and a Mexican restaurant. And that's where we're at currently.
This is a design review case. It's not a zoning case. It's not a general plan case. So what is our purview at this point? It's, do we like, do we like the buildings? Do we like the colors? Do we like the elevations? And does landscape meet guidelines and requirements? And that's about it. And, and so we can't limit the use as part of this design review hearing. And it doesn't sound like the use has been set. It's been set for this case and the way it's laid out, but it could change. Is that correct? Eva? And, okay. Nancy?
Correct. The item for discussion today is the site plan, landscaping, grading and drainage, floor plans, lighting, colors and materials.
Okay. Not use. Use has already been come and gone. So with that being said, planning commission, do you have any, any feedback on any of those items? And any questions for the applicant? Any questions for the citizens? And, and any questions for staff that might come into play here?
So I have a question for the applicant. So she stated that there's a nine-bay auto shop shown on the plans there, but there's not one planned. So I understand, by hearing that, that makes me think that it's just a placeholder. Is that correct?
It was an offer that we had at the time that this site plan was distributed, but has since gone elsewhere. So at that moment in time, we had that.
So right now, it's a placeholder?
Yeah, basically.
Okay. And if somebody wanted to come in with another use, they'd have to come back through this. I guess this question's more for Eva. If another user came on, came on board and say it's an urgent care, which I believe was one of the uses that was allowed at this site, they would have to go, go back through this process and present whatever building, floor plan, site changes to get approved?
Ask Sydney to address that, please.
Commissioner Anderson, Sydney Bethel. So it would have to go through an administrative design review process if it's under 5,000 square feet. If it is over 5,000 square feet, it would come back to you for approval of the new site plan elevations, materials, et cetera. So they would have to do an additional process to amend for different users. Something like a hospital, not a hospital, I apologize, like an urgent care is a designated use in community commercial, but they would have to go through that process.
Okay. And if we leave the application as is right now and we vote to approve the overall with this nine-bay car center, it's, that's what's kind of anticipated to be built there?
Commissioner Anderson from this middle, correct. So they would be permitted to build that by right and submit for construction documents. No additional planning approvals would be required if they proceed forward as shown.
Okay. Thank you.
Chairman? Neil Feizer, the applicant would like to address the commission.
Okay.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you. I just wanted to, you know, raise a couple of points here that we do meet or exceed all the zoning requirements there. The automotive use there with the set, in regards to setbacks, landscaping, screening with walls, site walls, et cetera. We are, you know, there's even particular sections in the code that address that the bay doors should face away from the residential area, et cetera. So we've taken all those code items into consideration when, when they was out.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have any comments or questions for staff or for the applicant? Yes? Commissioner?
Thank you, Chairman Bloomfield. Yeah. So my, my question is, is these, if, as this is designed, these bays have a, these are internal, meaning that, that there would be a wall between this and then the current wall that actually separates the properties. Is that correct? I guess I was asking you, Sydney, if you're still on.
I apologize. I was pausing to see. Commissioner Munt, so there will only be one wall. So there is actually a wall existing from the McQueen Landing development and they will be utilizing that separation wall. We do not allow double walls, so it will just be the one. There just will be additional screen walls along the street frontage, but south and east of budding McQueen Landing will just be the existing eight-foot wall.
But I, I guess what I mean is the building itself, does it have a back wall?
Oh, I apologize, Commissioner. No, it does not. So it'll just be the rear of the building.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Question, the doors open away from the property line or are they also opened along the property line?
Eva, they open away. So the west elevation here is showing, this east elevation is showing what will be seen by the residents in McQueen Landing. So there is no openings in the east elevation, only the west facing away. And as Mr. Feizer stated, they aren't allowed to have roll-up doors facing towards the residence if you're within 200 feet of residential. So it was designed in that manner in order to try to mitigate potential issues from arising for the residents.
Right. Okay. And that was what I was trying to point out, was that you'll have an internal wall that will also then have another landscaping wall, both of which the sound waves would have to travel through. So I, I completely understand the citizen's request for, you know, consideration here because there are a lot of significant noises there, but also that there will be some mitigation efforts just simply from the walls that do exist. I know it's not ideal and I also just wanted to echo what Chairman Bloomfield said, that we aren't really in a position from, to, to describe whether or not that use is allowed, given the criteria of what we're actually reviewing here. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Commissioner Simon?
I have a question, I have a question for the developer. With regards to that Pad C, is it my understanding that you're building to suit or you're going to build that as a spec building and hope to fill?
We will either sell that pad to an end user or we will probably do a build to suit, most likely.
Okay. With, with regards to what's before us, I mean, we're, we're looking at the grade, the drainage, the site plan, and I, and I don't see any issue with the site plan. I mean, obviously we can get hung up on the, the nine-bay light use repair facility, but that doesn't sound like it's actually in motion at this point. From a site perspective, I think that it's a good use for the site. So I would generally see that, that this potentially could move forward. But I, you know, just understanding that, that is, you know, still up for negotiation, it sounds like. Oh, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Simon. All right. Well, at this point, we'd like to close the public hearing and bring this up to the commission for discussion and a motion. And would anybody like to lead out?
I kind of already did, so thank you very much. I, like I said, this, I mean, we're looking at this from a site plan perspective. A design review is in front of us with regards to the elevation and the site plan layout. I think that, that it meets all the criteria. I don't see a reason why we would reject it. I do understand the, the residents concerned with regards to the light repair facility there and the noise that potentially could be. You know, obviously we're not here to stop individuals from property rights and, and being able to build, you know, as long as it's within that, that nature. But it sounds like that piece of it is not solidified at this time. So from a site perspective and, and the case before us, I, I believe that, that I will be voting in favor of it.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? I have, I have a couple of comments and I like the site plan. I, I don't have any problems with it. Sat here and looked at it and, and studied it in the, in the packet. And I personally don't have any problems. The things that I see and I, and I heard the residents' concerns, and unfortunately we can't say, you cannot have this here. That's not one of our options. Because it is allowed by right within this zoning category. What we can do is say, we don't like the color or you need to heavy up the landscaping behind that. And, and I'm willing to go to that extent. There is a retention basin and I, I think the layout has been done very nicely and, and has accommodated all of the, to the extent that they can and still have it be marketable, they've put a retention basin behind that building and, and landscaped within the retention basin. And then we have the site wall and then there's the park. And so as far as being as far away as, as it can and still be effective on the site plan, they've done a good job of that. And so I don't have a concern with, with anything else on here. And, and honestly, I'm grateful to see development on this corner. It has been vacant for a very, very long time. And, and so we welcome the development, especially in this part of town where, where it's been kind of lacking for a long time and been mostly built out. So we would, I would consider this to be an infill piece almost and, and I would welcome it. So hearing your concerns, I would offer one recommendation and, and could we, Ms. Davidson, could we make a condition that they heavy up the landscaping and add a certain size box tree in that area so that they can have more of that landscaping behind that facility? If that, if that in fact is what gets built there, I would recommend that they heavy up the landscaping and put more trees back there so that that can help to shield and provide noise barrier and that kind of thing, because that kind of vegetation will always do that and do that well. So.
And, and that's a proper condition? We just want to make sure we have it, we got it, right? Okay.
Okay. I think that that's, given, given the neighborhood, the neighborhood's impact tonight or input tonight, which we really appreciate and value. We're glad to have you here. And unfortunately, we, we can't tell people who own property, especially when it's zoned by right, that they can have that. You cannot do that there. If, if that's a condition that you don't want, then it's your opportunity to buy it and purchase it and do what you want to with it. Unfortunately, that's about where we're at on this one, because that's not our purview. So is there somebody who would like to make a commission to that or a motion to that?
If somebody does make a motion and wants to put a condition on landscaping, please make that part of the motion and try, you may want to discuss specifically what you want, because this is the last chance you'll see it. So I don't know if you want larger trees or additional trees or something of that nature.
I guess we should ask the developer if they're willing to, to adhere to that. So.
Shall I unmute the developer?
Let us make a stab at what we would offer for a motion. That way it, it can be more solidified and specific than, but yes, is he willing to entertain that, I guess initially, and then let us take a stab at it?
Okay. One moment.
And Chairman, there's.
Ms. Hill, would you be willing to entertain additional landscaping as a condition?
Should Pad C proceed with an automotive use? Absolutely.
Very good. Would anybody like to propose a motion or should we discuss the, the condition here right now?
And Chairman, I, I would suggest that if, if you do want to specify a condition that, you know, you can hash out as a commission, what the commission would look like. And when it comes time to the motion, you don't have to necessarily restate everything. You could just say, as agreed.
Sure. Okay. I would, I would recommend that right now we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven trees shown there behind that building. And it's a fairly long building. I would recommend that we either go with a bigger box, requiring it to be a 48 or a 60-inch box, or increase the number of trees to say 12 instead of seven. Does that sound reasonable? And Commissioner Blazer?
So my thoughts are, if we go down this road, I think, I think about what it's going to look like five years from now and it's going to fill in pretty nicely with the trees. So I, if, if we're going to go down this road, I would say a larger tree so that they get, the residents get the benefit of, of that additional barrier earlier. I, I think, I think, and I'm not a landscape expert, but we may, it may be overplanted if we add more. So I would, I would lean towards larger trees.
I agree with that concern, but, but it looks like there's a couple of bare spaces there and typically these landscape plans are shown to be at about a seven or eight year growth. So I'm confident that we could add another couple in there and maybe still add size to that, but.
And members of the commission.
Sydney, what is it?
What we're having a discussion, I just wanted to put out there, based off of the landscape plan, that possibly three trees, like Commissioner Blazer said, 48-inch box would probably be something that would be more mature, possibly on the east and west side. So maybe to provide some sort of specific condition of approval to add an additional three trees, 48-inch box on both the east and the south side. More than three may not fit, based off of the current landscape plan.
I forget, are there homes that back up right along the south, Sydney? Yes, there are. There's two right there, aren't there?
Yes, I believe so. Sorry, I am pulling it up. What I'm showing you on the screen is actually the approved open space plan for McQueen Landing. So to the south there are none directly, but what the residents were discussing was this amenity area that ended up being a child's play area and pool. The closest residential home is going to be this lot 90 right here, located adjacent there. So this is what the current plan, I placed it in here with the approved open space plan for McQueen Landing so that you could have an understanding of the release and.
To me, it looks like they could add three more trees and then increase the size of that box. Currently, they're all 24-inch box trees, which is a relatively small tree. It's only going to have a caliper of maybe three or four inches and, and, and they aren't going to be very tall. So, but it's very costly to make that jump from 24 to 36 and, and on up to 48 and 60. And, and really, I'm only concerned right there behind Pad C and that building and providing the shielding and everything right there. So it's not the entire south side because it doesn't, I guess, I guess there is a concern from the residents, mostly about the amenity center, the activity center that's there in the pool. That's, that's a big part of it. But I would, I would welcome input from a commission. I, I feel like I'm kind of commandeering here.
Would it make sense to add trees down on the south end, adjacent to the pool, as opposed to filling in behind, behind Pad C where it's, it's a road on the other side of the fence? Just, just a thought.
That, that appears to be retention based on the other side of the fence, if I'm looking correctly at that. Yeah. We've got a road and a retention basin.
And, you know, I guess my, my suggestion would be to just put the three possibly bigger, I don't know, and I do understand too, there's cost constraints, but towards the end there and then move the three smaller ones up to behind the building where that road and everything else is, so that the three larger ones are there by the amenity center to do the most protection, both from sound and view. And then there's still the other trees would eventually grow up.
Are we becoming designers at this point?
Chairman?
Please, Eva.
Our recommendation, I, I think there's agreement that three 48-inch trees could be added. And you could say at a location along the east or southern side as determined by staff. And then when they are ready and their landscape architect has had a chance to look at it, they could make a proposal to staff and we could approve the location of those trees.
That, that sounds fair. Okay. So it sounds like, sounds like the addition of three 48-inch box trees to be. So it sounds like the addition of three 48-inch box trees to be located as determined by the owner and as approved by staff as the condition.
And we would certainly want to make sure that the applicant is in agreement with that before you vote on that, if that's the way you wish to go.
That sounds fair. Commission? Okay. Please.
Is the applicant? Okay. Thank you. Ms. Hill?
Yes, I just wanted to mention, we would be in agreement if this was the automotive, like an automotive repair shop. If this were a car wash, an automated car wash, which is also an approved use, that the trees wouldn't necessarily be applicable. This is mostly due to the noise, correct?
It's noise and sight, I think, was the main concerns of -- but, yeah. That's what I heard, was noise and sight, odors, all of those things. And you would have the noise and sight even if you had a car wash there. So I would say if it's anything automotive, I would keep it that way and keep that -- if you have to come back before us, then obviously, that would go away because you'd be coming back before us and have a different case.
And Chairman, for a design review case, we do not make conditions based on uses. So this would apply to the same site plan as a whole, just because a lot of it is next to impossible for staff to enforce and to confirm.
So it's to the site plan, if it needs to change and you come back before us, then it would go away? Is that agreeable to the applicant and owner?
Ms. Hill?
Yeah, I think that's sufficient. Neil, are you still on the call?
Mr. Fuser?
Yes, I'm on. That's acceptable.
Very good. Okay. I would entertain a motion.
All right. Can we just nail down what this condition is going to be? So this is how I kind of got it written right here. So if I'm understanding what everybody's agreeing to, when Pad C is developed, the developer to provide larger box trees and three additional 48-inch box trees on each, on east or south side of Pad C, trees and locations to be determined by developer and approved by staff. Is that the gist of what we're all agreeing to?
It's just the complete additional --
Pardon me, I'm sorry for interrupting, but Scott Hinsey, who's also with the developer, would like to speak if he could be unmuted, please.
Okay. Eva?
Hill, I'm sorry, I do not -- could you repeat that name again? I do not see it on our list.
Scott Hinsey. He's with Diversified Partners also.
He is not shown as in attendance.
Ms. Hill, did he attend via a phone call in through our phone line? Okay. So Eva, he's on the phone line. I do not think he had time to register for the WebEx.
Thank you, Sidney, but there's no phone numbers listed either. There are seven people on the attendee list, and they all have names. Hold on a second. We may be able to locate him. We now have Mr. Hinsey.
Thank you so much. Sorry for that. So I just want to, again, reiterate that we don't know what use is going to potentially go there. We'll definitely conform a use to the zoning code. We don't want to speculate on other uses and have to do this additional trees for other uses. If it ends up being this auto bay or this auto use that we're shown here, I'm more than happy to add three larger trees. I don't want to increase the size of the other trees. That is a huge cost, and this project is already quite expensive. We can't afford to add that sort of line item into the budget. And I would also say that I'll be reaching out to the HOA folks subsequent to this hearing and talk to them about this because we want to be good neighbors. We always want to do the right thing so we can talk about what other uses they would support. And, you know, I'd love to go sit down with a bunch of them and meet regarding this. We've been trying to meet regarding the fence in general, but the HOA hasn't yet taken over from the builder yet. It's supposed to happen either this month or next month. And so we've already reached out to Lennar and have been in contact with them, asking them to put us in contact with the HOA members so we could discuss this project and talk about some neighborly things that we're excited about. So I'd love to talk with them after and talk about this use and some potential other items that we might be able to do with them that they would be very happy with. So we're more than happy to make a condition that if it does get built as shown here, we would add three 48-inch trees, but we don't want to increase the size of all the other trees. It'll get overgrown, and it'll be a mess and a nightmare in the future.
I heard you loud and clear, and I agree with, we don't want you to increase the size of the current trees that are planned. We just do want you to add three 48-inch box trees. And according to legal counsel here, we can't make a determination on if it's a site plan, it's what we're voting on tonight, and it is what it is. And it's not based on use, it's based on this site plan. And so you wouldn't have the opportunity to opt out of the three additional box trees. It's going to be there. Is that going to be okay with you?
Chairman, Ms. Hill has her hand raised. One moment.
Oh, you know what? That's actually been there for quite a while. I'll take that down.
Would you like to comment, though, on the condition of three additional 48-inch trees on the south or east determined to be determined by applicant and staff regardless of the use, as we cannot discuss or make conditions on use at this evening?
Scott, are you there?
I'll give it back to Scott. One moment. Mr. Hinsey?
Thank you so much. So Eva, am I understanding you, that you're saying we can't say that the three trees only have to be planted if we built a light auto facility? Is that what you're saying? You can't add that as a stipulation?
That is correct. This is a site plan. It's not a discussion of use. So either the site plan has three additional 48-inch box trees or the site plan does not. We cannot condition it based on a use.
Well, I don't love that idea. Certainly, if it's something else that doesn't need, you know, there's already a forest on here. You know, I'm not excited about adding trees. But if that will help the commission members, I'd love to hear their input on whether they think the three trees are necessary for this approval. And if they are, we can get back to me and get it moving along. But I'd like to hear from them.
And Chairman, I'd like to note that if ever there was a change on the use, there's nothing that prevents them from coming in for an amendment to the site plan, including an administrative type of amendment. We do allow that for minor changes to landscape plans and stuff. I don't know if three trees is a minor, you know, administrative item, but that's always an opportunity.
Okay.
Nancy, I do want to put the caveat on there that if this is a condition of approval, it cannot be changed administratively. It would have to come back to the commission, even if it was an administrative design review. The decision to remove the three trees, if it is a condition of approval, would have to come back to the commission since they did put it on the site. Sorry, I just wanted to provide that clarification.
Okay. Thanks, Sidney.
Thank you, Sidney.
But Chairman, I think it's important. I mean, the applicant doesn't have a user for that site anyways at this point, so I don't see what the urgency is on why we would need to approve this without those trees, if that can come back at a later time.
Chair, I think for me, the concern is if a user does come about and sees that it's -- there's an automotive shop planned for that area, that they can get an automotive person to move there, then where's the protection for the neighbors if we don't address it now? So that's my stance on that.
Agreed. And that's my concern as well. If the use changes, then they have to come back in and do something different if it's significantly different from the site plan. Would the applicant be willing to just say, we're going to increase the size of, rather than add trees, just increase the size of several of those trees along there? And name the number. I don't -- I'm just looking for protection for the neighbors. The trees that are planted there as a 24-inch box in the bottom of a retention basin are not going to provide very much sight or noise protection for the neighbors. That's all I'm trying to accomplish right off the bat, is to get more of that right off the bat. So.
So Chair, I think for me, it's either add the three additional trees or a certain amount of trees the boxes need to get up. Because the reality is, yeah, it's showing a lot of trees back there now. But the reality is, when you're going to new developments, the trees, there's so much development going on out there, you're not getting mature trees. They're all younglings. They're anemic-looking when they first get planted. And it's taken them five to 10 years to get to the point where it's going to be full, and you're going to get that visual screening that everybody's thinking that's going to happen when it gets developed. So I think we need to address either add more trees at the beginning, those three, or they need to upsize a few that are more mature. So it fills in a lot quicker.
That's my intent as well. So, yes. Commissioner Blazer?
So I don't disagree with the opinions that have been expressed. I just noticed that the developer has 40% landscaped area where 15% is required, I think is what the chart says. They've got a lot of trees for this development already. And I just want to acknowledge that, recognize that. I mean, I could support just upsizing some of those that are already existing or maybe even moving some back there, not necessarily increasing the number of trees, but addressing the residents' concerns without adding too much additional cost for the developer.
Okay. I thank you for that input, Commissioner Blazer. Given what I'm hearing now, it almost seems to make more sense to require four or five of those trees to be upsized rather than adding any. And that might make a better use of the resources available to the developer and give the benefit to the residents that we're looking for. Okay. Any discussion? Or do we just approve it? I would entertain a motion.
I would support that, upsizing three, four of those to be chosen by the developer, approved by staff.
Okay.
Yeah, not necessarily adding any.
Because you're right. They have accommodated what is required by the town and gone above and beyond, actually. But they are on a hard corner, and that always requires, you just have undevelopable space. So it ends up being more open space than usual. So, anybody? Okay.
Yeah, this is Scott again. I'm okay with upsizing four of those trees. We're okay with that.
Okay. Very good. Then I would entertain a motion with that requirement.
Okay. I'll give it a try since I think I listened well. Chairman, I'd like to move for approval of consent item number 17, DR 20-71, Guadalupe and McQueen Retail, with the stated stipulation, as discussed here, of four of the trees at the southeastern portion of pad, auto center pad, that abuts the swimming area, being upped from 24 to 48 inches.
So we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Blazer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you to the residents for coming out tonight and being heard. We appreciate that. Okay, moving on in our agenda. We're done with all of the regular items, meeting items, and now we're with all the cases. We get to consider the approval of the 2021 regular meetings. Turn it over to staff. Eva?
Thank you, Chairman. In your packet, there should have been a list of next year's meetings. We did take into consideration fall break for Gilbert Schools, and your October meeting is slightly modified. That's the only real change to your calendar of meetings.
And July 7th will be after the July 4th holiday and not -- yeah, so that'll be good. So that one's been moved as well, correct? Okay. Okay, entertain a motion. Vice Chair?
I will move to approve the 2021 Plan and Commission meetings' calendar as discussed.
Second?
Second.
Commissioner Blazer? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on, we have the next item is the Planning Commission meeting minutes from last time. Chair, Vice Chair?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes from September 2nd, as written.
Okay, second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Munt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We have report from Chairman and members of the commission on current events. Welcome everybody to the commission and hope we can do good things here as part of this. And it's a pleasure to serve with all of you and look forward to getting to know you better. And I don't have anything else. Anybody from -- any members of the commission have anything they would like to share? Okay. Planning Services Manager, Eva?
Chairman, I would like to thank our outgoing commissioners, Cavani, Alabrande, and Mackin from staff for volunteering their time, and we appreciated all their assistance. I'd also like to welcome all of our new commissioners. Thank you all for volunteering your time. And since we have so many new commissioners, our town attorney, Nancy Davidson, came across training from the League of Cities. And I just will follow up with an email with more details on it, but there is training on the rules, roles, responsibilities, and best practices of planning and zoning commission members. That training is offered November 12 from 10:00 to 11:30. It's a virtual training. And we'll send out more information on that, but I do encourage commissioners that would like that training to become involved in that. That's all from me. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have one recommendation. Everybody get out and vote. That's our next opportunity and obligation, and then we'll be back in here in November. So look forward to seeing you all after the election. Hopefully, by then, we will know who's won the elections, but we may not. So, thank you. That will adjourn.